Is not a conversation or dialogue with the Board. If an issue needs further attention, the Board may refer the matter to the Superintendent for review and/or investigation. Testimony on non-public agenda items is limited to a maximum of 15 minutes per topic. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, and depending upon the total number of speaker requests received, the time may reduce to two or one minute each. Non-agenda public testimony is for only those topics not on today's agenda. If your topic is on the agenda, you will be called to speak when we get to that subject matter item. Today, each non-agenda speaker will have up to three minutes each. Please remember, no deferral of time is allowed. The Board asks that speakers focus their comments on the issues and not on individuals. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. The lights are located directly in front of the podium, on the dais, next to Cheryl Ward, our Board Action Officer. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. I'm going to call the names of those who signed up to speak in advance first, and then any speaker slips submitted this afternoon. If I call your name, please come down to the podium area and be ready to speak in the order I call you. So timely submissions are Francine Maxwell, followed by Katie Dumbrokas, and then Anna Bonatari, and then last will be Citizen. So Francine Maxwell, thank you.
Francine Maxwell, I would like to request an audit be done in the secondary office due to the fact that over 17 people in that office adds up to $7 million. We have a $6 million shortfall where families in District E cannot take vacations together or family time. So I would like to request that the Board have a conversation and consider having a budget workshop in the Situation Room because the conversation needs to be had between parents, community, and the Board trustees so that we can continue to build trust and be more transparent. Given that you have a balanced budget and you've done it on the backs of children, you've slashed transportation, you've slashed some supplies for facilities, I would like for us to have a conversation so that you can show us how spending $7 million worth of adults, these people have about nine resource teachers, different, everybody got a resource teacher, but the kids that need them that are reading at a well below grade level. So I'd like for us to come together in the Situation Room so that we can talk about how our money is being spent because there's some issues there, in my humble opinion. I think that parents in District E, especially the Crawford Cluster, who won't be able to be transitioned into a traditional schedule, it's very disrespectful because they have kids that go to all levels, elementary, pre-K, and there's no real quality time if there's always somebody missing from the house to go to that particular school. I think I was told that it's Crawford, Hoover, and maybe San Diego High the other night when I attended a meeting. But north of eight, everybody's on traditional, so they get to all go to vacations together, and there's a lot of family time that is allotted to those particular clusters. And I think that that's an equity issue. I think there's a discrimination issue. $6 million should not be hard to find because all these people don't need a confidential secretary, an assistant secretary one, an assistant secretary three. I'd like for us to have this type of conversation, that we can really delve into this chart in the Situation Room like we used to. Years ago, we used to have budget workshops, and they were moved around to different communities to make the books open and accessible so that we could have an honest relationship. So I'd like to say that also, I'd like to make sure that you re-look at and audit the books on Saturday School Money because as I was reading some materials, now some schools that never ever receive Saturday School Money, they're now receiving the money. So there needs to be a conversation and an explanation. Where did the money go before? Where was the money being spent and utilized for all the Saturday schools in the years prior that they didn't get their money? Thank you.
Thank you, Francine. Katie? Dumbrokas, I said that right?
Hi, I'm Katie Dumbrokas. That's enough, it's a tough one. Thank you for the time, this opportunity to speak with you. A little bit about myself, I'm coming from a work experience background as a professional scientist, a credentialed teacher, school administrator, and a proud mother. My daughter will soon be entering kindergarten in our local school district. I am concerned regarding the Administrative Procedure 4922, Section 5A, regarding flag exercises. My specific concern is that it is required in elementary schools but not in high schools. I wish I request that the pledge requirement be removed from elementary schools. It is not required in high schools, it's not even required by state law. It's per state code, even if we remove the pledge requirement that is currently listed just in the elementary schools, just remove it because it's not required, the AP still meets the state code for having a daily patriotic exercise which includes patriotic singing. And, let me see, I'm a little nervous at times. I think doing so would remove the divisiveness and miseducation components of having the pledge state that we are one nation under God. We are not one nation under God. This creates division among the schools and students and also is miseducating. I also, so that's my overall request. If the request is not granted, may I suggest an alternative? One alternative could be to have an alternative pledge, still allow the schools to create their own alternative pledge, one that builds community, that they actually, not only that, can have an education component because there isn't that education component. Educate them about the different words of the previous pledge. Allow them to create one that is specific to building the culture of community in their school, that they can be proud to all stand together and come together as a community. The other alternative is also maybe reverting back to saying, okay, well, let's look at the historical stance, let's do the original federally approved pledge, you know, that just admits under God, that is perfectly acceptable if you want to look at the historical aspect of it. If none of those requests are granted as well, the last request would be then to make sure that we take the necessary steps so that we don't have legal action in our school district. This is very common across the United States. We need to make sure there are two different aspects included to avoid legal action. We need to make sure our students' rights are protected, so that includes, we need to educate all parties, we need to educate teachers, staff, about how to handle when a student does abstain. We know very well that, I know very well, that we have the right to abstain, but does the student, does that staff member? Educate, and also not only do that, but the last thing is to just make sure you have to notify them of the right to abstain. State Florida law requires notification, I think we should as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Bonatari?
I don't know if you saw the article in the UT about the new arrival center and the disappointment that the parents had. There were a couple points that were made in the article that implied that the problem with the new arrival center had to do with isolation and that there was maybe federal oversight that was causing it to be changed, but what I've included there is the response from the state that said that there was no problem with the actual program, that it was indeed just funding. In addition, as you probably know, there is a committee that was formed for the benefit of the CYF students, students with interrupted formal education, and they were told, they were given the website of the U.S. Department of Education Newcomers Toolkit to review to find information on what would be a good program. Well, the program that is on that site, because I wrote, I went through and read it, and I included the pages that refer to the designated ELD for the students, and it is exactly what the district just got rid of. It was the new arrival center program where students had up to a year to be in that, what do you say, close accommodating, loving nurturing environment that would give kids the time to acquire their English before they went into regular class. My second main concern, it just, things just keep getting worse because through that CYF committee meeting, it was discovered that there are still schools that do not have an ELD teacher. I've given you a copy of the roster that was provided to the CYF committee, and there are two names highlighted. The one name which is incorrect on the roster, the correct name was in the newspaper article, and so I researched it, and that particular person does not hold a California credential to teach in the state, which I found interesting because many other teachers were displaced who had been in that program for years and had been doing exemplary work, but now they aren't qualified, yes, yet somebody who doesn't even hold a credential is qualified? Explain that to me. The second name that's highlighted is not on site at that school, and when I searched her up, she also does not hold a credential in English single subject that's required for that position, which was why many of those teachers that did have those positions were eliminated or excessed. So there's problems there, and it's the kids that are suffering. So now we're halfway through the first quarter, there are kids in the high school that have not had real ELD, have not had those lessons because they've got substitute teachers who probably are also failing all their other classes, which is going to ruin their chances for graduation as well.
Thank you. Citizen?
So school board approved a common school year for all schools, and apparently there is a $6 million budget issue so that the rest of the schools south of eight can also come to a common school year with all the other schools north of eight. It's a big disruption to a family. My children were in year-round and traditional schools at the same time, and it makes a very difficult living situation for parents to arrange for childcare and to have your children together for different events. It's a very stressful situation. It's very disconcerting that the Board gave direction to the Superintendent to have this happen, and it is a school south of eight in which the money runs out. Plenty of money north of eight, but when it came to south of eight, they ran out of money. And it's very concerning that you would run out of $6 million. That's not a lot of money in the scheme of things. It certainly isn't a lot of money when you consider the benefits of bringing a common school year for all the schools, for the teachers, for attending meetings, for uniting families so they're on the same schedules. I don't understand why you have a $6 million gap, and that's the thing that's stopping the common calendar from going forward. And it coincidentally is the schools that have the impoverished families that do not know how to advocate and do not know that they're being discriminated against. That's not equity, and this needs to be looked at. This is in District E that all of these schools are being affected, but not the other districts. No, I take that back, also in the San Diego High School District. So that needs to be looked at. Why is there not $6 million to follow through on what this school board voted to do?
Thank you, Citizen. This completes the non-agenda public testimony for this portion of the meeting. Thank you all for your comments and for taking time to address the Board and the Superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. So I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the November 1, 2016 regular meeting to order with all Board members present except for Trustee Weiser, who is absent from today's meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Begin.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. If you wish to address the Board on any of the agenda items before the Board today and your name is not on the speaker list, printed on the blue papers located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you have not already submitted a request for public testimony, please complete the form and submit to Cheryl Ward, our Board Action Officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of that agenda item. Once discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the Board. Board Bylaw 1025 provides that public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, and depending upon the total number of speaker requests received by the Board on an item, the time may be reduced to two or one minute each. The time limit for speakers on today's agenda items will be announced at each item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at five and would also be heard at the end of the meeting. I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Send move.
Send move, second discussion. If not, cast your vote. The agenda for today has been adopted. I will now hear Item E1, the 2016 Board President Scholarship Award. This is the 20th year of the San Diego Unified School District, and I think I'm supposed to go to the podium. All right. Oh. This is important, this is how we fix the teacher pipeline. And acknowledge our classified staff who are currently taking courses and have decided they would love to be a teacher, and in some way, if we can help that and make that possible, that's the purpose of today's meeting. I am honored as President of the Board to be able to present this year's scholarships with the help of people in the room. So, it is the 20th year, and I'll be assisted. It is the 20th year of the San Diego Unified School District presenting the Board of Presidents scholarships, along with the California Coast Credit Union and the Mission Federal Credit Union, who donated $2,000 each to fund the four $1,000 scholarships. The scholarships are presented to monthly classified district employees who are currently enrolled in college and have a good, a goal of becoming a teacher. We had many deserving applicants, which made the selection process very challenging. A screening committee scored each application, and I'm pleased to announce this year's recipients. We have Ricardo Vega. Kelly Fragoso, Kelly? We have Marcy Latimore and Akia Green. Their names have been engraved on a perpetual plaque that will hang in the Board of Education office. So we have Marjorie Rice, Vice President of Community and Public Relations with California Coast Credit Union, and Yvonne Jones, who is Senior Regional Business Development Officer with Mission Bay Federal Credit Union, and they are here to help present the awards. Ms. Rice and Ms. Jones, thank you for joining me.
It's our pleasure.
Terrific. Ricardo, please approach the podium. So, a little bit about Ricardo. Ricardo is a special education health technician at Lindbergh-Swizer Elementary School. Although Ricardo has held a variety of jobs over the years, including a position as a certified nursing assistant, he believes that earning this teaching credential and continuing to work with special needs students will allow him to better serve the students in his community. Ricardo's colleagues describe him as "a true team member who advocates for the needs of all children." Ricardo is currently attending National University while earning his teaching credential. Ricardo, congratulations. Thank you. A little momento, there's a certificate, I think there's a check in there.
Yes.
Do you? Go. Got a photo? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ricardo. Kelly, please join me at the podium. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a real thrill. So, a little bit about Kelly. Kelly's a special education assistant at Anger Elementary School. Kelly plans to use this scholarship award to continue her education as a child development major, specializing in working with mild to moderate special needs students. Kelly's colleagues think she has already proven her effectiveness as a teacher by working collaboratively with staff and building a strong trusting relationships with her students. Kelly states that she enjoys teaching and watching her students grow. She strives to provide a positive, safe environment for all students and will continue to be an asset to the San Diego of Unified School District. Congratulations. Thank you. That's class. Got it?
Yes.
I think it's class. Thank you.
You need to say word.
Oh, yes, please.
Well, first of all, you just elevated me to Vice President. That will be shocked my boss. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it this evening, but I'm the Community Relations Manager for California Coast Credit Union, and it is truly our pleasure to be able to present these scholarships. We so value our teachers, we were founded by a group of teachers, so education is one of our core values, so we couldn't be happier to be able to help you in continuing your education and to being a part of this ceremony. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Very. So, Marcy, please join me. Good seeing you again. Terrific. So, Marcy is a special education assistant at Taft Middle School. Since beginning her career with San Diego Unified School District, Marcy has always made an effort to treat her students with respect and understanding. Marcy states, I quote, "I manage to stay calm when things go awry and handle situations to the best of my ability in order to make sure the students I work with don't lose control." Marcy's colleagues describe her as "a true professional who works well with staff, community members, and students." Marcy currently attends the University of Phoenix and expects to earn her teaching credential December 2017.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. So, we have Akia. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. All right. A little bit about Akia. Akia has been a special education technician at Lindbergh-Swizer Elementary School since 2008. Akia plans to use this scholarship award to continue her education at Walden University, where she is majoring in clinical mental health counseling. Akia's colleagues admire her ability to help integrate her students into mainstream activities such as attending assemblies, sporting events, and recess play. Akia credits her nephew Blake with inspiring her to work with special needs students. Blake was born with spina bifida. Spina bifida. Fiftada. All right. I can. And Akia witnessed his struggles firsthand. She states, "Our children are our journey to both enjoy and endure." Blake is now a thriving adult, and although Akia sees the frustration, her students sometimes endures. Blake's success encourages Akia to continue working with her students. Congratulations. There you go. Yours. Okay. You get it? Thank you. Cool. Thank you.
Did you get a group shot?
Oh, yeah, we have group shots.
Let's get between you. There we go. There we go. Yes. Yes.
like to point out that the Board President Scholarship Program complements the work of the Teacher Pipeline Task Force, a joint understanding with the district and the San Diego Education Association in developing a plan of action for cultivating a highly effective and diverse teacher workforce. It is clear that these dedicated employees and future teachers already demonstrate important core qualities, and are so, and we are so pleased to see that they are furthering their education. And thank you again for being here, thank you for your commitment, and thank you for your desire to become an educator and a teacher. We'll now hear from Item E2, the public hearing to consider renewal of the Charter for Health Science High School and Middle College. Superintendent Martin and Ms. Park, thank you, please present the item.
Thank you, President McCrory. Ms. Parks is just getting herself situated up here to, we're just, we're conducting a public hearing tonight regarding the renewal of the Charter for Health Science High School and Middle College, seeking the renewal of its charter for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2017, taking us through June 30, 2022.
Thank you. The Health Sciences High School and Middle College has been operating a high school, grades nine through 12, and more recently, it opened a middle school. This particular renewal item presented for a public hearing, if approved at a later date, most likely in December when the staff returns for a recommendation, would merge the two schools into a single grade six through 12 organization, which is largely how it operates now. So it would be a technical revision to the grade levels, and so what would happen is if the high school was renewed with the expanded grade level, when the middle school term, middle school's charter term came up, it would simply expire, and the schools would just run as one with a single budget and single LCAP. The school is located on a non-district site. They cohabit the first and second floors of the building. The tables in the right up summarize some of our recent smarter balanced academic data, so we now have a baseline, and we also have a year's growth in both subject areas for the schools. And because of that essentially merger, we've brought the middle school data for you as well, even though it's just the high school, so that you can see what would be approved together as a collective institution. And then, of course, since the LCAP is approved and updated annually, we've tried to summarize for you some of the high school and middle school outcomes. What we're noticing charter-wide is looking at the LCAP to combine goals, to consolidate and focus on some of the goals, so you'll see in each evolving LCAP what appears to be smaller goals, but underneath those one-year outcomes really do keep the spirit of the larger goals. And so we tried to summarize some of that information, as well as the very important LCAP development process, which looks different at each charter school, and so we want to take at least some text to share with you how Health Sciences has done it, which as you can see is throughout the year, not a one-time event by any means. And then, the projected enrollment is summarized for you in Table 3, again showing those additional 612, but clarifying this is not a second school, it's just going to be a consolidated school. And then, the last table summarizes the governing board, including two-
We feel our staffs are moving along the same direction, have both benefited the district and our school from that. We have enjoyed a great relationship from the real estate department as we pursue our Prop Z funding that you've supported, and I hope to come back soon with a building security. Thank you very much for your support.
Hello, I'm Lisa Kan Tu-King, and I'm here today to support the renewal of the charter. I feel that it's very important, and I'm glad, I'm appreciative to have a voice in this. So, for my family, HSHMC, it's been a treasure within the Southern California school system. It truly has. The students are diverse. The teaching is challenging, yet backed with support with forward-thinking and out-of-the-box thinking teachers, and I really appreciate that for my son, who is neurodiverse, and so he thinks a little bit differently sometimes than other neurotypical children. So, it has really brought the best out in him, and he's thriving, which is wonderful. So, also, each student is treated like a person of importance, which I found very enlightening and satisfying as a parent looking at what's happening in the school where my son is at. So, as an older mother who's been through this high school system with two older boys, I find this school offers my son, Alexander, a chance to realize how important education is. So, the internships offered through the school are exactly what students need to help them realize how knowledge offers them choices out in the world. The faculty sees each student as an individual and helps each student learn to work as a collaborative team, just like we adults have to do in real life. My belief is this type of education is the beginning to a healthy adult who contributes out in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello. My name is Abdali Jama. I've come to this. No, thank you for having me today. I've come here today with my family, and I'm a junior currently, and I went to, I got to, I came into Health Sciences High in the ninth grade scared and overwhelmed, but then I soon came to realize that it was nothing to be afraid of. They treated me as if I was their own family. They became my family. They became my, it became my second home. And during my time at Health Sciences High, I've had multiple experiences. I've had a wonderful internship at Sharp Memorial Hospital, where I've studied underneath a nurse's aid and helped her with patients, and I've maintained a 4.0 GPA. I've, I currently am enrolled in college classes, and I believe with, like, in my hearts and my soul that Health Sciences High is leading me onto a better future on a successful path, and I hope that path will take me to UCSD, where I could study and soon become a cardiologist for you.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good evening, everybody. My name's Eric Perez, and thank you for having me in front of you guys today.
Thank you. So, I'm coming here to speak on behalf of HSHMC. I'm a former graduate. I did graduate last year. So, I just want to say HSHMC was the best, the best reality check of my life, going to a middle school where I wasn't really cared for. I was just a number. I was just a statistic of, oh, I need to get this kid in order to improve his grade score. Like, they didn't really consider you as an actual person. But then, once I came to Health Sciences High, I noticed that here it was a much more of a family culture. They considered you as family. They took you in as their sons and daughters. They cared for you regardless. They were there for you after school, even until six, when the school had closed. They were there for you regardless of any circumstances that you were going through. I just want to say HSHMC really opened up my eyes to the many different possibilities that are out there. It opened me up to the diverse culture that's in the school, to the many possibilities of the internships that are at Sharp Hospitals, which I took, which a lot of people I still think take for granted, but you need to, you need to learn that. This isn't an opportunity that everybody else gets, everybody else gets to experience. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Because of them, I want to pursue my education in the, in the medical field, and because of them, I was able to get into UCSD, where I'm currently attending and planning to become a doctor. So, just, I just want to say a big thank you to HSHMC. They really helped me out with my life. They helped me get everything together. They helped me become from the antisocial kid that never wanted to do anything to my senior year, being the host of president, being the, being the president for ASB. It just really got me out of my shell and got me to exploring the many different possibilities that the school has to offer. I just love this school with all my heart, and I just, I'm proud to call them my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
Thank you for having us. My name is Renée Schaefer. I'm a teacher at Health Sciences High. I get to work at a place that is welcoming to all different cultures, all different identities, and all different learning abilities. We are 100% inclusive, and I'm proud of that. I'm a key player, along with fellow staff members and students, in creating a place where restorative practices is implemented, so we are practicing how to be the best citizens of our community and of society. Our staff, we are part of a community that also promotes, it's never too late to learn. We have a growth mindset, so I see students that are successful at our school that wouldn't be anywhere else. Just speaking to some students today, they say it's because of the relationships that we have between the teachers and staff. I too am encouraged to have a growth mindset. I just, I have two masters, and I'm currently enrolled in a doctoral program that is very challenging. I'm also nationally board certified, along with three other staff members. We have about four other that are currently in that program. I get to work with students and families, which makes the school the best school in the universe. The students are the best students in the universe, not because they're perfect, but because they will always try to improve. They see failure as an opportunity to grow and learn. They're resilient, and our school is not done. We still have a lot of practice, which makes us the best school in the universe, because we are always trying to move from good to great. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Last speaker.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin, President McQuarrie, and honored board members and staff. I'm Michelle Anderson with the Southern California Regional Manager for the California Charter Schools Association. I'm here this evening to tell you that, yes, there is positive news in the charter world, and Health Sciences High School and Middle College is at the front and center of that positive news. This school is the little engine that could, except it's not so little anymore. It's grown into a professionally-run educational institution of choice, serving most, serving some of the most underserved students in the district, and serving these students very well, with exciting internship opportunities and a caring and nurturing environment. This school also has become a model of innovation, not just to other charter schools, but also to neighborhood schools in the district. This is a model that should be replicated throughout the district, the county, and the state. So, it's easy for CCSA to advocate for the renewal of Health Sciences High and Middle College, and we ask the board for a unanimous decision this December when you do vote on the school's petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for your presentation. Comments from the board? Questions? Trustee, Whitehead Payne?
From my perspective, it's very interesting to see the other side. When I was at Cal State U San Marcos, working with the special education folks, this was one of the sites that we always sent students to observe. Those who were going to become special education teachers, they had to have a requirement of going out to visit, star, if you would, sites and different sites that were doing something innovative. And this was always one of the most populous sites that we would send students to for their observations. And then, also, having had a teacher candidate, a student-teacher placed there from Cal State University, and going out and observing that particular student teacher or teacher candidate. So, it's good to hear it now from the student side and to see it from the charter side, because in special education, you have so many different models of students not only being in the K-12 system, but pre, post, et cetera. And this is a very good site that we always like to send folks to from Cal State U San Marcos, so it's good to hear this side, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Payne. So, just for the record, we did open to public speakers, and that has been closed, and now we're having board discussion. Trustee Evans?
Yeah. First of all, I wanted to say that I've heard a lot of great things about the school. I haven't been there myself, but I've heard a lot of good things from your staff, from the staff here, and certainly tonight, hearing from the students, talking about, you know, the school being a family, not just a test score, as the superintendent is always saying. And so, I mean, and as well as the teachers and parents who, you know, are testifying very well in terms of what's going on at the school. I just have a couple of questions, and these are just in terms of oversight. First of all, I see on the test scores, there was a pretty dramatic improvement in English and math with the, under the old system, I mean, in terms of the previous testing system. And we can't really compare apples and oranges, because there's, there's a new baseline with the new, with the new S back. I'm just curious, in terms of the, the scores on, on the math portion, is that in line with district schools, or somewhat lower, or how?
For our recommended action in December, one of the things we'll additionally research and present is the district schools that the charter students would have otherwise attended, and so we would compare the baseline and growth years for those schools. That's part of the renewal analysis that staff does to say, what are the top three or top four, top five district schools they would attend, and we'll compare them side by side by grade level. We also consider if it's a growth projectory. So, we're noticing on its own, both subject areas for both middle and high school have grown, and in our most recent site visit at the school last month, one of our discussion points was the difference between the math, and I know as part of the LCAP and part of staff's discussion with our office, there's been a focus and push in the conversation. The school had, as a lot of our charter schools did this summer, very close reading and look at the data, and so we know that math has been an area of focus for the schools in their development. The school in particular allows the staff to choose from professional development topics, so almost like a university setting. So, the staff in their weekly and monthly and annual set-asides for talking with each other has understandably decided to look at math very closely school-wide, not at the detriment of English Language Arts, but definitely on a going forward. But we will present otherwise attended data, too.
And, and this question may not be accurate, because it's just based on something I read on a charter, a report about charter schools. It had listed schools across the state who, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't want to say this wrong, that, that Health Sciences was mentioned as one of the ones, and I don't know if it was due to a lower percentage of special ed students or exactly what it was.
If you're referring to the, there was an ACLU report that
That was probably, yeah.
Health Sciences was, in our opinion, erroneously identified due to, what happened was a statewide initiative went out, and several district schools were listed, and the very confusing part was that multiple errors or violations would be listed, and then a long list of charter schools, but none of them were identified as to which violations the charter schools were doing. So, you'd say, the report concluded that the following 30 charter schools are committing the following five violations, but not identifying if each charter school is committing them all or just one. This was, of course, a very important attention piece for us in identifying one of our schools, and the focus with respect to this school had to do with admissions and enrollment. So, our first phone call was to the school, and in having our conversations, it was unfortunate that oftentimes website or older language used in a handbook or on a website was not drilled down to ask, how is this question or this enrollment process actually implemented or executed at the school level? And so, we did follow up. We researched it, and my understanding is that this particular school was revised from that report as being identified as one of the violators of practices, and it's no longer in that category.
Okay. I just wanted to throw that out, because I, you know, we heard very good reports about what's going on in, in special ed there. And then, one other question in terms of the enrollment and the projections for the future. There are currently about 600 high school students and about 100, and most recently, 129 middle school, and for a couple of years in the future, 2019, the goal is 910. Is that broken down? Is that keeping the high school even and adding on middle school, or do you know how that breaks down?
I think, most, yes, in terms of grade level, relatively even. A lot of this is also dependent on the facility search, the capacity of the facility. So, the school has been awarded through our Prop Z process by our board, a project, and so part of that is how the capacity of the facility. But overall, the school has been even in terms of its grade level enrollment, and in looking at its admissions, we've not seen the school turn a student away, quite the opposite. It's one of our charter high schools that you will see matriculation and retention go reverse. So, you will take a ninth-grade enrollment, and in four years, you'll see a higher 12th grade graduation. So, we don't even have some of the terminology to express 100% plus in terms of students who are enrolled in ninth grade and then graduate four years later. So, but overall, in the middle school, that would look like a 303 enrollment per grade, I'm sorry. Yes, a 303, sixth, seventh, and eighth, so. But it does depend on the ultimate facility that's secured for the school, since they are very much bursting at the seams at their current location. Although the students complemented that, it forces them to interact on the stairways and hallways, so they cited that as a benefit as well.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. All looks very good.
Yeah, again, I very much appreciate the partnership between the school and the district, and I know that Superintendent Martin and the leadership team here often talk about the value of the partnership with, with Health Sciences High to schools in our district, so very much thank you for that. So, Susan, and you just mentioned the facilities. When you come back with the recommendation, it would be good to have an analysis of, I know, I don't know if it's currently the case, but I know that the lease payments to rent the space has been a challenge, and so if we could talk about the benefit to the school moving forward as it's able to secure, you know, facility space with use of the bond money and, and sort of the impact on the, on the operating budget of the school.
Yeah, there's a couple of questions in addition. I have visited the HSHMC school and was impressed with the warm welcome, the, the individual attention that the students receive. It really is about developing relationships, and it's a tight and bond between the instructional staff and the students and everyone, everyone at the school. The stand-up meeting in the morning is impressive, where the entire staff gathers to talk about the day and then to identify students that need a little bit of help, a little bit of attention, and the entire school then organizes around posting a particular student up and to give them recognition. Also, the tour of the school with the individual students identified to take me around, and the honesty and integrity and the, their sense of, and pride in their, their school was, was to be acknowledged. Had a couple of questions. One, and we did have a parent voice tonight, but I noticed on the, on the application, there's two parents are not, other parents are not identified as representatives, and I just wondered if that's been taken care of or...
Both are currently vacant. What the school does have in place through its LCAP and even prior to the LCAP is an acronym, P-
the space has been a challenge, and so if we could talk about the benefit to the school moving forward as it's able to secure, you know, facility space with use of the bond money, and, and sort of the impact on the, on the operating budget of the school.
Yeah, there's a couple of questions. And in addition, I have visited the HSHMC school and was impressed with the warm welcome, the, the individual attention that the students receive. It really is about developing relationships, and it's a tight and bond between the instructional staff and the students and everyone, everyone at the school. The stand-up meeting in the morning is impressive, where the entire staff gathers to talk about the day, and then to identify students that need a little bit of help, a little bit of attention, and the, the entire school then organizes around posting a particular student up and to give them recognition. Also, the tour of the school with the individual students identified to take me around, and the honesty and integrity and the, their sense of, and pride in their, their school was, was to be acknowledged. Had a couple of questions. One, and we did have a parent voice tonight, but I noticed on the, on the application, there's two parents are not, other parents are not identified as representatives, and I just wondered if that's been taken care of or...
Both are currently vacant. What the school does have in place through its LCAP and even prior to the LCAP is an acronym, PACU, PACU, again with the theme of the, the health science. It's, I think, the Parent Auxiliary Care Unit,
Yeah.
Which is the equivalent of the PTA or PTO at a charter school. So when you're on campus, it's not uncommon to see a parent assisting, and they will take on very different skill sets, as encouraging parents to participate, including, I believe, haircuts for prom and so forth. So it's really a very creative way to get parents involved with whatever skill sets they have to offer the school. But right now, the present status is that both parent vacancies are vacant, of both seats, but that there's a strong desire to encourage that at the school and recruit.
Saw that as a priority. In addition, I noticed that the, and I may have missed it, the last minutes of the board, of the, of their, of the board was 2007, and I'm wondering if there was a more recent submission?
Of the renewal?
I think so. It was in the, the minutes that were included in the application, had a 2007 date. It's, I don't know if...
One of the attachments?
I didn't, yes. I didn't note the page, but it's, I think it's where the, the board signs off on that we had the meeting and we're recommending approval.
Oh, that would be at our December meeting?
But it was dated 2007, unless I misread it, and I, it's always my question, is there something that's more current?
Then the, the current charter would be expiring in, on June 30 of 2017.
Is there a board that met that submitted, or approved in submission of the application and the renewal?
Between 2007 and 20, minus five, 2012, yes. So this would, this is the school's third renewal.
Okay, I just didn't see the, might have this been the original, and we didn't have the, the update.
That would be the date, the original.
So the date of the, so what I looked at is the date of the original?
Yes. So the high school would have been started approximately 10 years ago, and then the middle school started about three years ago, and then we would be combining them as part of our renewal recommendation in December. And so there would have, but there's, there is a, a missing board action then, if that hasn't been...
Yeah, so that's, like, that's the question.
And we can, we can track that down.
So there was, there was a meeting, there was approval.
Yes. This would be their second renewal since I've been in, in this office.
And then, I know that there's a merging of the middle school and the high school. Can you explain how that's going to take place?
Sure. The high school was the initial startup for the organization in 912, and that's been in existence for the longest period of time. More recently, approximately three years ago, the, there was a desire to go vertically down into the middle school grades, so a middle school serving 6, 7, 8 was opened. Many of our charter schools at that time, in part, to seek out startup funding through the state and federal programs. The charter school grant program created essentially a second charter petition with a full-fledged second LCAP and budget, and that allowed for technical autonomy to be eligible for those grants. The middle school has received and goes through a state process to show what is done with those funds, and once that's been completed, some of our charter schools, including this one, have determined that it is a single operation with a single board, and so they want to, at their renewal, eliminate that procedure. It's not as efficient for the school to do two of everything.
Thank you. More questions?
You said the parent group is the PACU?
Yes.
All right. That's just interesting, Health Sciences, because that's the post-anesthesia carry in it.
Yes. It's a penny school.
They're getting ready.
Any other questions? All right. So this was an information item.
That was funny.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. E3, E3 act, this is an action item on the revision to Charter School of San Diego Charter to change the location of the Woodman Resource Center. I'd like a motion for item E3.
I will move to approve.
A move to approve?
I'll second it.
I heard a motion to approve, and there was a second. Any discussion? You want to present the item, please, Superintendent Martin and Ms. Park?
Sure. Charter School of San Diego operates several resource centers. It's a non-classroom-based independent study school, which means it's not a traditional classroom campus, and so the Woodman Resource Center, currently at Paradise Valley Road, which is inside San Diego Unified Boundaries, is going to close through the school's desire and proposed a new site at 2939 Alta View Drive, also within the district boundaries, later on this month. It's going through some city permit approvals, and so it'd be subject to those documents coming our way, but the school has certified that it is going through that process. I think a couple of things to note here is that staff went out to the site today. It does appear in size and scope of the other resource centers. We will go out to the site again if it's approved by our board to know that it is an operating resource center. The table here before you is what I would consider a continuation of the work that's being done by the Charter School of San Diego, ADEO, and Laurel Preparatory Schools, where all sites that are not located within district boundaries are being part of a larger transition plan. And that transition plan includes options that the school has identified in collaboration with the district staff, and they are not always the same answer. So some of the sites have already, in this table on the right side, you can see the header "Facilities Outside District Boundaries, But Within San Diego County." So these six sites, several of them are part of a petition that had been locally submitted to Grossmont School District. Another handful have been locally submitted to the Sweetwater School District, and then I believe one is in process of being researched for either a local authorizer or new location. None of the sites have resulted in closures or termination of services to students, which has been very important to both the district and the charter school. The Woodman one, you can see on the left, is the number 10. So this is already an in-district site that will continue to be in-district, but it is moving approximately a mile, and it reflects, I believe, a larger single location instead of two suites that you have to walk around to get to. Tim Tudor, the executive director for the organization, is here to address you if you have questions. Otherwise, staff has looked at finances, the financial plan, and it's mostly a technical adjustment, because we do want our charter schools to let us know where they are, so we can come and observe and conduct oversight of them.
Questions? Comments? So the Charter School of San Diego is our first charter that was established by the school district in 1992, I believe? 93?
It grew to 93, opened in 94.
All right, thank you, Tim. So, and it has grown to serve a number of students and to get a number of students through high school and graduate, and it's been very, very, very good. Thank you for your submission, and we have a motion. We had a second, and hearing no other discussion, cast your vote, and it passed unanimously with all four board members with one absent. So, do we have any additional speakers? Cool. All right. This meeting's adjourned. All right. Thank you. Next meeting's November 8.